Do you want to record? Good. All right, thank you, everybody. This is the, actually, we're going to run two sequential meetings tonight for all intensive purposes is for the, you know, basically procedural reasons. We have importantly, we have the town budget public hearing, which we have the opportunity to receive comments from the public on the budget and get any input that the public would like to share. And then we will move on after, we'll adjourn that meeting and move on to our regular Board of Finance meeting where we conduct our normal business and agenda. So I'll go ahead and call the public budget public hearing to order. We will recite the Pledge of Allegiance to start, a pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. What I thought we would do is, you know, make a few comments or actually highlight some of the things in the budget. I don't know if, you know, we want to take a lot of time doing that, but I thought it might be of value to just kind of go over that and preempt some of the questions that might happen and point out some of the things I think it would make sense for the public to be aware of if you're not already. Eric, can you give me the opportunity to share my screen?
You should have it now.
Okay.
Tell me if you don't.
Let me, yeah, I do it.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. The real opportunity to kind of participate or listen in on the budget explanations in the Board of Selectmen meetings as they prepare, and also, of course, Andover Elementary School and the RAM budgets, those are major proportions of our budget. It's divided into six, I'm sorry, three main expenditure sections, if you will. The RAM education budget is one. It's voted on independently and developed independently of the town, but it is part of our, of our town expenditures and budget. The AES district, school district budget is another major portion of our town expenditures and budget. And then, of course, we have the town expenditures, so everything needed to run the town. So those are the three main areas that make up the expenditures and taxation requirements for the town of Andover. This is where we are now with this draft budget. This is a draft. It has not been accepted or voted on in full by the Board of Finance, but will be and will, and hopefully, as we have a fair proposed budget, we'll present that at the town budget meeting. So the way this budget rolls up, we have a column J here. If you see this, this is our proposed budget for 2024, 2025. And you can see in column K, it's a percent increase over the current budget. So you'll see some differentials there. I'm just gonna hit the highlights. I am going to talk a little bit about, just point out the areas that are major areas of change and the things that we're mostly interested in. And then we'll talk about a little bit about the mill rate as it currently stands. Okay. As you can see, the tax, proposed tax increase to meet the proposed budget is, is implemented there. It's not a large change, but it's about $10 million. It's about 1.1%. Okay? So moving down, we have a lot of areas of revenue. We have prior year's taxes, liens, taxes, interest, personal property taxes. We have several state grants that are listed here. We have a big slug of revenue from the ECS, that's Educational Cost Sharing Funds that come in from the state. Couple other grants from the state. Some anticipated, some are new. Rental fees, town clerks fees, these are permits and things that come in for work that's being done around the town, transfer station fees, waste redemption, et cetera. All in, there is a revenue aside from taxation of about $2.7 million. So that shows is a large reduction. You can ignore those numbers because the way the spreadsheet set up until the mill rates finalized, we don't really have it, we don't include the $10 million in taxation. Because taxation is strictly based on the expenditures minus, you know, the mill rate, so we don't actually add it in this. But the main thing is that you can see it's, it's, you know, most of these line items are pretty much line on line. There isn't a lot of differences in the, the amounts there. Couple things of note, highlighted here in green, the RAM budget. We got kind of a bonus this year because the percentage of the students in Andover that make up the RAM student population is lower. We actually have a reduction in our costs from last year for the RAM budget. So that helps us out quite a bit and allows us to keep an offset quite a bit of our expenditures and needs. So that was a nice bonus. The AES budget right below it, they're proposing a budget of $4.3 million roughly. That's about a 2.6% increase over, or 2.7% over, over last year. There's a miscalculation. I'm just gonna hide this column, so. So it's a modest increase from the AES and as most of you probably know, that budget is developed separate from the Board of Finance. It's developed by the, by the superintendent of the district in concert with the Board of Education, and they held many workshops earlier this year in developing their budget. And then we have a detail below here. We have a lot of the town expenditures detailed. Basically, department by department, line by line. Again, I'm not going to go through them. But I will highlight some of the, the major changes, just so people can see where, you know, the impact is really this year compared to prior years. We can certainly make this available to you if you would like to see this. The main one I think to look at first here is the community center. So as everyone's aware, we have a new community center that's being built and having it up and built is great, but we also have to fund the activities there. So there's a significant amount of expenditures that the Board of Selectmen have requested to fund, to make that community center operational. And some of these, some of these expenses do a little bit of offset to some other work that's going on in different areas of the budget, you know, things the town clerk and Recreation Commission are doing. It really should be part of the community center budget. As you can see, all of these area, all of these are new. You see no expenditures for prior years. So there's a total additional expenditure of about $73,000. The bulk of that is for wages for the director, who we anticipate, you know, the selectmen really anticipate the, this director position would be taking out a lot of the activities associated with the rec department and all, because we're kind of getting that done on an ad hoc basis. And it makes sense to have the community center director help organize and manage some of that stuff. You know, the rest is for things like maintenance and software and, you know, phone, internet, et cetera, and equipment janitorial. So that's a significant addition to the town's budget this year to take advantage of the new community center. We have a pretty big jump here in our health and dental insurance. You can see I've highlighted that. It's about a 40% increase. So there's about, you know, it's about another, it was, it's about another $70,000 increase over last year. That's just the cost of, of our health and dental insurance for the town employees. Okay, scrolling down. Couple other things of note. Mostly down in the fund area, I believe. Yeah. So down in this area is where some of the capital funds are managed and budgeted for. So we've got a couple differentials that I think are worth pointing out that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have been taking a close look at. One is the multi-use building. We still have some work that needs to be done. Not all, not everything's really being done in terms of setting that community center up in the multi-use building for everything that it's going to need. But we haven't finished it. We haven't fully furnished it. So there's, there's, really to make, take, take advantage of that building, we need to do some additional work and, and add some furniture fixtures, et cetera. There's also a significant increase, about $75,000 in the Bridge and Culvert Fund. Anybody who's been in any of the town meetings, I've heard Eric talk quite a bit about this. We are just woefully underfunded and our bridges and culverts are the work that's going to need to be done. We will hopefully get some state and federal help here and there, but it, there's still a significant commitment on the part of the town. It's gotta happen. We have also set up a capital fund for the Andover Elementary School. This is new, hasn't been funded in the past, but the reality is that we need a capital expenditure fund for the AES school. We do not have any mechanism currently significantly in place to fund capital improvements to the school, and this has become a real issue. We've got some parking lot problems. We've got some other infrastructure problems that really need to be dealt with at AES and, and we're behind on these as much as we are on some of the others. So we need to take a hard look at that. And then we also have an open space fund that has been newly funded this year to tune up $50,000. And what this gives us an opportunity to do is be prepared should some opportunities arise where the town may be able to acquire open space if such were to come up for sale. We've missed some opportunities in the past potentially because we did not have any such fund or the resources to take action on. Some real things that might have been a real bargain in town in terms of securing some open space for the town. So that's, that's what that's all about. And that's really it. The total budget excluding education, there's about $4 million, $4.3 million, a little more there that you can see at the bottom of the screen. It is a significant increase for the town expenditures, about 16%. Again, most of that driven by the new funds and these increases to the existing funds such as the Bridge and Culvert Fund that we really feel is necessary at this point. Yeah, and we haven't voted on this as a board, but I think we're coming to agreement. So I don't want to misstate it. This isn't the final proposed budget, but we will be voting and presenting something probably very similar to this. I'm gonna flip over to the mill rate calculations where it does show our total expenditures. You can see here, it's about $12.8 million all in. Total estimated revenue again for permits, fees, grants, and sets about 2.7. We've got $150,000 proposed use out of the fund balance. This is our reserves to help offset some of these new expenditures. About 30,000 exemptions, abatements. That's nothing particularly different than what we have before. And this would calculate a total to be raised by taxes of about $10 million. Okay? The grand list is here. This is the value of all the personal property in town estimated. And so that calculates to a mill rate, per mill is about 319,458. We calculate that out to an estimated mill rate for taxation purposes of 31.46, which gives us an increase in the mill rate of 0.55%. So that's basically how the taxation breaks out. When we, when we look at it, it doesn't mean that somebody's taxes are going to increase by 0.55%. It really depends on where the house, your cars, et cetera, are assessed. So that is, but that does show a slight increase in the mill rate. We were at 31, 31.31.29, and it's at 31.46 right now. Okay? When we do the calculations for all the budgets, the fund balance used, et cetera, the total by taxation will go up about 1.1%. So not bad overall. Fortunately, again, because some of the offsets from the reduction in the RAM budget, we're able to significantly reduce the impact of the town even with the increase to the town expenditures. So. Okay. That being said, I think I will go ahead and open it up to public comment. Eric, do you want to go around to the, to the board as you see it and offer to accept public comment?
Certainly. Okay, first up on my screen is Linda Fish.
I'm all set, just listening.
Okay. Second up, Kathleen.
Can we go to, thank you. Can we go to the new community room in your budget sheets, Mark? You're on mute again.
Sure, I was trying to share and I couldn't get to my mute button either. Let me see, sure, I'm on the right one here. Just like work, I have too many spreadsheets open sometimes. All right. Right here?
Yes. So let's see. Well, first thing, in column M, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down, it should be annual maintenance. Just want to correct that, but I don't see heat in here. Is that part of, where is the heat for this building? Oh, you have electricity, 8,000. How, how are we heating this new building with these splits?
Yes, this, this building is completely heated with duct, ductless split heat pumps. So the electricity costs should absorb that.
Okay. All right, and the Connecticut Partnership for Health Plan, Eric, we still haven't. So Connecticut Partnership offers the health plan for municipalities. It's part of the state of Connecticut. They look at your health costs and kind of spreadsheet them. Just wondering if we've ever, we talked about that eons ago. Has that ever been looked at?
Nope, not by me.
Okay, I'd recommend that to the board. You know, to keep these 40%, your health costs are going up left and right. State of Connecticut has a plan to help small towns with this rising cost. I know it's not good for this budget, but something somebody should look at. And then the other point I wanted to make is last night, we were told that 130,000 has been set aside for this new community room for what I understood were kitchen cabinets and things that we needed, which I understand. So my question is, why are we adding another 50,000 in this budget if we have 130 elsewhere? Or do we need, do we need all of this money for this new building? That's my question.
So I can answer that question. And, and the first answer is we don't need any additional money for this building. But right now, the multi-use building fund, given the commitments that we've made at this point, is basically fully expended. So what that does is allows us to begin keeping money into a pool that can actually deal with things, you know, major acquisitions, things like that. So, yeah, there's nothing initially in this budget that would require us to fund that. But it allows us to have that leeway if something comes up on a grant or something like that that requires a town contribution without us going back to fund balance. You still have to go to a town meeting to approve it, but at least it's already a budgeted fund. If that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Eric, who do we have next?
Well, sorry. It's hard for me to tell since we're in sharing mode.
I can stop the share.
Got it, thanks. Okay, next up, Ann Creme.
Hi. No, we're just here to listen and learn and understand. Tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Next up, Shannon Alon.
Thank you very much, and thank you to whoever was correcting those typos in, in real time, so I don't have to point them out, like.
English major.
Awesome. Terrific. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Board of Finance, for all of your work. I just really appreciate, and I know the significant amount of time. There's no salary in here for you, and I greatly appreciate all your work. The only thing I wanted to comment on, having reviewed all the budget, and I'm sorry I was late getting in, maybe you described it, Mark. I understand, I saw the, the reasoning for a $50,000 but, salaried budget for somebody, for the computer, Community Center manager or whatnot. I just think, given the status of the community center and the comparison of that salary to, for example, our town clerk salary, it seems quite high. Especially because I don't know how much really is going to be done in this coming year to manage that property. So that's my only comment, and if you commented on it before, Mark, I apologize. I had difficulty getting into the meeting. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks. We really hadn't commented other than to point out the, the expenditures. This is new, yep.
I just wanted to mention, last week Shannon wasn't present. We did have a discussion last week at our meeting, and we did cut it 10,000 up to this point. There was discussion of possibly cutting it a little bit more, not knowing. We're leaving it with the fact that it could be a full-time person now, but Eric has expressed that it might turn into a part-time person, so we did cut it once already.
I'm, I'm wondering, Eric. For the public. I wonder if Eric would be kind enough to explain the role a little bit for, for, for the sake of everybody that's on the call that doesn't know. Eric, you've talked about, you know, like three or four different jobs that would all be rolled into one. Maybe you could share that for Shannon and anybody else that might be interested?
Sure. What I proposed to the Board of Selectmen, which they put forward, was to essentially combine the position of senior center director, community center director, and rec center director, or recreation director, and combine them all and throw them into one person. But make that kind of a director level person so that that person is also responsible for grant writing and dealing with their own budget and administrating or administering the building in what goes on in. That's a big role. To be perfectly honest, what I was going to try to do is pit, is poach another experienced senior or community center director. Because I think getting a reasonable amount of programs up and running and doing it fairly quickly for the community is a big ask. And I also realize that there's a lot of money that we're leaving on the table that the state has and various organizations have for senior issues that we're not really capturing because we don't have the bandwidth to do it. So that was my goal in that position was to be able to fund a single person initially that could adopt all three roles and manage all three roles, including uses of the field, you know, and uses that occur in the gymnasium, et cetera. That person would essentially have three, you know, volunteer committees that report to them, one senior center focused, one community center focused, and then the existing rec commission, you know, would basically be, be calling the shots, but that person would be involved in doing the actual scheduling and dealing with fields and things of that nature. So that's what I envisioned, and that's what the Board of Selectmen kind of agreed to. You know, but how it actually shakes out is going to depend somewhat on who we can hire for that position.
Thank you, Eric.
So I have a question about that, Eric. Have you researched or reviewed, because you said poaching from another town. I mean, is this what in another town, a director does all of these functions for $50,000 plus benefits? I mean, is this, are we capable of getting somebody to do all of that for 50,000?
Honestly, no. But that's the budget I was given. So that's where we're going with it. Uh, next person is on a phone, a phone ending in 5475. You'll have to unmute yourself. I can't unmute.
Hi, this is Leanne Hutchinson. I might wait till the end, if you have public speak again at the end, to speak about the community center, but I guess I'll wait until then. Thanks.
Well, as far as the budget hearing, this is the only public speak. So if you want it as part of the budget hearing process, now's your shot.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't, um, listen. I didn't look at the agenda. I just wanted to, I just signed in after you had already begun anyway. I guess, I, my comment isn't fully finalized, which is one reason I was gonna wait till the end, but apparently there's no such thing. Anyway, I'm about halfway through listening to the Board of Finance meeting from last week. I, I guess it's the most recent one where there was a lot of discussion about this. And I signed in now just in time to hear a couple of your comments from Eric and Kathy, et cetera. I, I think a lot of it from what I listened to at the Board of Finance meeting last week seems to, to me hinge on whether or not it's full-time or part-time. And as you know, you had a lot of discussion about comparing this to the salary for the town clerk. And I, I kind of understand why you would want to do that, but I, at the same time, I think this is a completely different job. So again, I keep coming back to what I've listened so far as to whether or not this person is full-time or part-time, but from the remarks that Eric just made about essentially having three different, almost three different job titles in one, and having several committees report to them and wanting someone to do grant writing. I think that you should be, try to be comfortable looking on the higher end of the figures that have been discussed because I just, I think it's a big job. I'm not going to look for it now, but there's, East Hampton is looking for a full-time person for their senior center, and it was advertised in the River East, and I don't remember the salary, but it was, again, a full-time position, but I think it was at least 50,000. And I'll correct myself at another time if that's not right. Thank you.
So did you say Columbia?
I meant to say East Hampton if I didn't.
Okay, I, one of the ones I was actually kind of hoping to poach just got poached by another town that was paying way more than we're willing to offer. But that's beside the point. Okay, that appears to be everybody there.
You've got Jed Larson.
Right, yep.
Unless I'm missing somebody.
Jed Larson.
Jed. Oh, sorry, my apologies, Jed.
And I actually had comments tonight. But, you know, first, you know, thanks for a really good job on, at least the budget from my point of view. When I read the River East, I see there's other towns that are wrestling with the eight to nine percent increases. And so when this came out to what was less than, you know, $100 increase for me on the mill rate, I said, wow, that's, that's pretty good. So thank you for the good job on that. The one of the things that you had highlighted in the budget that I didn't understand is, you know, the fire commission had a pretty big number associated with it. And I didn't know what the fire commission did. You know, I thought it was a group of guys who voted on whether or not we were going to buy this and that. So obviously, I didn't know how the fire commissioners could spend that kind of money. So there has to be something I'm missing.
I can take that one, Mark, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, please, Eric.
So the way it works is that the town of Andover has a volunteer fire organization that is their own organization. So the town owns the building and the town supplies most of their operating expenses through the fire commission. The Board of Fire Commission's budget is the budget to run and manage the fire department for the town of Andover.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, you shared the comment about the $50,000 increase in the multi-use building fund. And my comment was gonna be to the fact that I was surprised at last night's meeting, we talked about all the different things that were going to be done from the multi-use building fund. And I'm thinking tonight, well, at least last night, I thought that was the fund to build. And I'm thinking tonight, well, at least last night, I thought that was the fund to build the community senior center, and that was the multi-use building. Maybe that's not exactly true, and there's other multi-use buildings in that group that, uh, I wasn't understanding. But if it was just for that, and we were talking last night about all the different things we were gonna use that money for. My, my concern was we shouldn't be putting fifty thousand into that. We should be identifying what the use is actually gonna be. But maybe that, maybe that fund is more than just the community senior center.
So that fund was initially, so that fund came into existence before I was the town administrator, and it was funded over a number of years. Um, and it was designed to be just, uh, what it says, which is a multipurpose building fund. But the first and, and biggest priority for that fund was the construction of a future senior slash community center. Um, and that fund would have been continued to be used exclusively for that had not the pandemic hit and then the town had the opportunity to direct, uh, ARPA funds, um, to get the initial build of the community center done. So that left, uh, a fund that was initially around, I don't know, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We did spend the initial engineering and design work out of that fund. But we funded the actual construction with ARPA funding or ARPA funds. Um, so that has left money there. Um, and then now twice at, uh, well, actually three times, once last year during the budget process. Uh, the Board of Finance as part of last year's budget process, uh, pushed to the residents that they would be spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money um, to complete the senior center, um, above and beyond what the ARPA money is. Uh, subsequent to when we can do it without paying prevailing wage. And then additionally, at a meeting, we, in twenty twenty-two, the town by town meeting appropriated seventy-five thousand dollars of that to build the senior transportation, uh, garage. So that project is still slowly in the works, um, but that was also allocated to come out of the multi-use building fund. Um, and then, uh, at last night's meeting, um, you know, at a town meeting, we agreed to take an additional sum out to, uh, assist with the town's portion uh, of the match for the steep grant. So that's the status of it so far. Um, I think it's a valuable fund for the town to have. And the reason is, is I think you don't wanna be dipping into fund balance every time you propose a project that requires a town match. Um, so that's, that's where I think it's going.
Okay, I certainly don't have a, have any issues with, with what the money's going for. It just, it when we were talking about the steep grant, building the, you know, the, the rec fields and that, I had a hard time tying that into the multi-use building fund and, and being able to see in the budget, you know, what it is the money's actually being used for. And that brings me, you know, to the next comment I had, and, uh, in one, I was pleased to see the, you know, fifty thousand dollars for open space funding in the budget, and it talks about going into the open space fund. And I am not aware of how I might see what what the balances are in all these different funds that we have. So if somebody were to ask me, well, how much is in the open space fund now? You know, I'd go back to the last time that we tried to buy a piece of open space, and I knew what it was then. I don't think we spent any, so it's probably the same. But we've got all this money we're transferring into the, uh, various funds, and it might be nice to see somehow how much is in each of those funds.
Jed, I don't wanna interrupt you, but we as the Board of Finance asked that exact question at the beginning of our sessions this year as well. Since we are putting away, you know, money each year, you know, and I said the same thing. I need to, you know, since we're asking for a big spending increase this year and putting it in all different places, it would make me feel better if we had the balances. So we were provided that, um, I don't have it in front of me now, but I think some of the money we're referring to too with the multi-use building fund, there was already an accumulation of money there, and then Eric would earmark what each thing was going to. Um, I don't, I have, um, another comment that I wanna make towards what some of the speakers were saying, but I don't wanna interrupt your, um, you know, the question's ongoing, because this is your time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, um. I guess last thing I would mention, just for consideration, when we go to the town meeting, you know, we've always had the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance up front. And we might consider putting the Board of Education up there as well. Because even though the Board of Education budget is only one line in the Board of Finance budget, it seems like there's always, at least half the questions that are coming up pertain to the Board of Education budget and having them up there, there, you know, still they have a bigger line item than in the budget than the town budget currently has. And so, uh, having them accessible to answer the questions right up front with everybody else, that that's something to consider, I guess I would just put it that way. But I think that was all the, uh, the comments and questions I had, and again, thanks for all the hard work, uh, on the budget. Looks good to me.
Answer your question currently in the open space fund. There's two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. As of the last time I got the numbers from the treasurer.
Okay, and that's certainly very close to what we reported a couple of years ago when we were trying to buy that piece of property, so I guess that's good. Thank you, Eric.
Yep, thanks, Jed. Joanne, go ahead.
I just wanted to, because a lot of people had interest, and I appreciate it. We did talk extensively last week about a lot of topics, but since people had brought up the, um, the position of the director, the community senior center director, what we have to remember too is that we tend to do a lot of comparisons. When we talk salaries and I make suggestions, I definitely do a lot of research with area towns and see what the ongoing things are going, you know, we've had things sent to us. The other thing we really need to remember, and that is, it's hard for me when we're bringing this up, is that I believe Andover has about three thousand residents, maybe thirty-three hundred. So it's really hard to compare the amount of work. I don't mean the position, the prestige, everything that's, but the amount, the sheer volume of work. Like Leanne had said, this is gonna be busy, busy. You know, if we compared it to even a Coventry or something, you know, a ten thousand dollar, a ten thousand person town, we're not gonna have the senior citizens that need the amount of rides, say, or whatever's gonna be there, so we try to balance that when we're selecting things that we really have to consider the volume too. I mean, the job is important. We think we, we left it at a nice salary point because we really, it's up to the Board of Selectmen and Eric as the town manager to decide how many hours full-time would be. So, in my opinion, I think someone looking for a job might be able to come in for that. I mean, you don't know until you try. And then, then you, you know, make some corrections, or if you're not finding the proper candidates, then you maybe make some adjustments with that. So it's, you know, we're just not a big town, so the amount of work, like when I went from an eight-hundred student school to a two-hundred student school, twenty teachers versus maybe eighty teachers as an administrative assistant, I'll just tell you, the amount of work I had at the bigger place was a ton more. You know, just trying to factor in the size of our town with what we try to bring forward. Whether it matters, but we were talking a lot about this position last week, so I think it's fair since it's a, a, a topic of, you know, discussion.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, we have any other comments from any of the Board of Finance members? And I guess I'll go ahead and say if anybody in the public has anything additional they would like to add. Uh, we'll give you one last chance before we return.
Thanks, Mark. This is Shannon again. I just had one question, and again, I'm sorry if you covered it when you were previously talking about it. Um, in the town administrators' office lines, it showed fifteen thousand dollars for a project manager. I didn't know if that was adding to Eric's salary to manage a project, if that was a separate position. And I also noted that the administrative assistant had a significant drop in income, so maybe that's where that was. I just was curious about that, that specific, um, area.
Yeah, unfortunately for Eric, it's not an addition to his.
Okay.
But unfortunately for him, it is a position he's trying to find. Go ahead, Eric, do you wanna kind of explain the rationale there?
Sure, so, uh, as many of you know, my previous administrative assistant uh, took the position of the tax collector in the town of Andover. Um, and I sat on that position and kept it open um, for six months and basically asked her to see whether she could fill in and then looked and saw how much load she could handle at the same time she was the tax collector. Um, now, bear in mind that there are, the, the goal on my part in having administrative assistant is to take some of the workload off me. And there's some things I'm really particularly terrible about, like updating the website, social media, you know, things of that nature. Um, so the question became, was it, could we do, could we better spend the money by getting me the support where I need it the most, which frankly is project management? Um, because right now we have open somewhere around thirteen million in grant-funded dollars um, that are coming into the town, and there's one of me to manage all those dollars. Um, and that's a lot. So I decided I would be, I would rather give up an administrative assistant and have some of the functions covered by the tax collector. You know, and just give the tax collector a stipend to make up for the extra work. Um, and partially fund a project manager, a very part-time project manager. Now, some grants and some projects, the project manager can be wrapped into the cost of the grant. Um, but in other things, it can't. So, so that's basically where, where I'm coming at it. Um, it's where I need the assistance the most to keep the projects that are going, going.
Well, I'd like to thank the Board of, uh, Finance for all their hard work. I know this is, uh, a tough, always a tough budget to put together because there's so many needs and everybody coming at you. I do think the senior, uh, personnel person, the director, is gonna be your sticky wicket to get this budget passed. Um, so I think, uh, having, uh, the job description, uh, which you just went over, Eric, as the director of, you know, senior, uh, co- community room and rec spelt out for people, it might help with that because, you know, it's new positions that end up always becoming a problem in the budget because people that are working aren't making this money. It's that's always a problem in town, the forty years we've been here, so. Um, but I support the budget. I think it's a good budget, and, uh, I think it's gonna move us forward, um, which is you know, what, what we need to do in the town with the community center and all the projects moving forward, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. But any final comments from anybody else who hasn't had a chance to add their second round? Okay, hearing none, I guess I would call for a board member to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the public speak.
Motion to adjourn any second.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Louise. So we have a motion to adjourn the budget public hearing. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor on the board, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, the, uh, the twenty twenty-four, uh, budget public hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation, everybody. Some good questions. I hope you found this helpful. Um, we will go ahead and roll into our regular meeting, and anybody who wishes to stay, of course, you're more than welcome. Uh, just another public meeting, probably a lot less interesting, but, uh, I'll leave that up to you. Okay, does anybody need to have a short break before we roll into our meeting? Okay, your opportunity has passed. I'm gonna call the regular, uh, meeting to order. Uh, this is the Town of Andover Board of Finance regular meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, again, we'll call this to order and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of Thank you. Okay, once again, we have an opportunity for public speak, uh, for the regular meeting. Anybody has any input?
Do you want me to go around the room again?
I'm just gonna say unmute yourself and, you know, let us know, because most of the folks here have already had a chance to speak on the budget, so we I guess that we probably won't have anybody. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on then to, uh, our agenda item number three, which is the changes and additions to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda? Joanne?
I, Mark, um, I just wanna make mention of, I know you weren't at the last meeting, but we had hoped to have Cheryl here tonight at the meeting. Um, I did reach out to her, and it's no fault of her own. I don't know if she received, you know.
Yeah, I caught the, yeah, I caught the email. She said.
Right, I wanted to include you in the email. Um, so I don't know on Eric's agenda if the new business is the treasurer actually talking to us or if there's something else he's gonna talk about with the treasurer. But, um, I know that what we had talked, sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this in this part of the meeting, but we were just gonna ask her a couple of questions and of her advice moving forward with, um, nothing about her particular position. We all stated last week how happy we are with her. We're so excited that she came in and cleaned up things. So she's just gonna give us kind of an overview, so I will continue to contact her and then report back to the board. And then whenever we wanna put it on a meeting agenda, we can do that.
Eric, to see, all right, so, Joanne, do you wanna move to strike that item?
Thank you for procedure. These are the things I need to know, so I would like to move to take off item five, um, letter A, the treasurer's, you know, appearance at our meeting.
Okay, we have a second. He's for discussion, Bill, okay? Uh, any discussion? Eric, do you have any concerns over us passing on that this week? No, sure, yeah, it was just a duck. Okay, any discussion from the board members? All right, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any abstentions? That's nice, Bill.
I didn't do that. I don't know how that happened. I have no idea.
Did I actually? They'll only get one vote. Are any opposed to the motion? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. We'll strike Agenda five A, which is the new business treasurer. Okay. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, I guess we'll, we'll move on to our old business. So item four A is to review the policy for AES capital expenditures. Um, do we have any discussion on that? Emotions, action?
No, that would be Rob's bailiwick as far as I understand.
Yeah, and he's gonna follow up, and I think, uh, you know, I'm, I'm guessing, Joanne, you probably let the board know we had some, a, a meeting and talked a little bit about the school and providing some information, not really relevant to this particular topic, though.
Right. Right. Yeah, I was just going to mention that later and kind of an overview that I had planned. Um, yeah.
I would also say, Mark, you do have Shannon Loudon on the call. Um, if the board had particular questions about that, she might be able to answer that since Rob is not here.
Yeah. I know personally I haven't reviewed it for a while, so it hasn't even been on the top of my head, but I don't know, Shannon, if you have anything to add for that or if you and Rob still are planning to get together and kind of ironing out the details there?
Uh, Rob and I have met a number of times. We've got a draft, um, and we're just finalizing the final parts of it. I've actually reached out to, uh, Cabe and our Board of Education lawyer to, just for final input. Um, we discussed it at last week's Board of Education meeting and hopefully we'll have something or we will have something for your May me, uh, May meeting and hopefully before your May meeting, we'll have passed the policy by the Board of Ed.
Good, good update. Thank you. Anything else from the board on this topic? Okay, hearing none, we can remove on to item four B, which is review of budget to actual. There wasn't actually any information in our packet.
No.
Uh, so we have nothing to review.
My apologies for that. Cheryl was in today working on that. So today would have been the first day we had, uh, it fully updated for the month. Um, so it did not make the packet. So my apologies for that.
So that would be the same for the item four C, check register. We don't have that to review and I don't know if any of the board members have any concerns. I mean, we've got a lot on our agenda and we're meeting an awful lot these days, so I don't really see a problem with, uh, as long as you guys let us know if there's any serious issues, obviously.
Well said.
All right, should we move on to four D? This is the audit review and I think the news here is that the audit findings have, uh, uh, been reviewed. We've accepted the audit and the corrective actions have been submitted to the state.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think we're in, uh, good shape there. I don't know that we have anything else to really discuss on this one. Okay, nobody has anything? We can move on to.
I was just going to say it's great that we're making progress. We're really happy. I know we'll talk about it later with, you know, when we had that joint meeting and the auditor was involved, that it's more positive than not. We're moving in the right direction. We're getting the audit to review a lot earlier than we have the past two years. Um, so it's moving in a positive direction, like you said, and hopefully with the final corrective actions and suggestions, like you said, that were submitted, you know, maybe even next year will be, will be a lot better, you know, and, you know, keep moving in that direction.
I'm optimistic, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, if we have no other discussion, the next item is the approval of the capital purchase process form. Again, we haven't, I don't know that we revisited this.
I'm going to share my screen.
Okay.
Uh, we discussed this at the last meeting, at the last regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then there were some questions, uh, raised by several people who asked for various things to be added, subtracted, or clarified. So based on that feedback, I'm kind of proposing this as the form. And just to refresh your memory, this will be a form that will be filed every time we make significant capital purchases so that all the paperwork stays in one place. And we, when the auditor asks the next year, we don't have to run around trying to figure out which meeting it got approved by whom and what the chain was. Um, it's all there in one concise spot. So I think that does make sense. It was a suggestion by the auditor. Um, and, uh, several of your members have, uh, given me some good feedback. So this incorporates the feedback that they had asked.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, and I just want to make a point that, you know, this is, uh, is a good form. It's, uh, I think it was a good suggestion by the auditor. And it doesn't mean, you know, approving this today doesn't mean that we have to live with this in perpetuity. So we can always just, you know, Eric can propose changes and we can modify it next month if we need to. So, uh, but I, I think it's probably a good place to start. Does anybody have any, uh, other suggestions or comments? You might want to make the motion to approve?
Mark, I just had one question for Eric. So once we approve it, you'll even, even though, you know, we're midway through a year, you'll all just start using this now, right? And then just.
Yeah, I've actually already started using the previous form for capital purchases, but now if you agree to this one, we'll use this one instead.
Going for.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve this version of the capital purchase processing form, um, you know, as pictured here.
Yeah. Capital purchase appro- approval form?
Approval form, yeah.
Okay.
Version two, I'll second that.
Bill seconds. Hey, do we have any further discussion?
Yep. I do have a quick question. Where it says date ordered, is that the item being ordered?
Correct.
If you're actually purchased, okay.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, I guess we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to, uh, we don't have any, uh, new business under agenda item five since we changed our our meeting. Um, agenda item six is approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting on March twenty-seventh and the April third special budget meeting, enable tense budget, budget meeting. These are separate agenda items. We should probably, I guess we could vote on them concurrently. Not sure there's any problem with that, although the problem is we don't have the minutes in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
I did happen to look into the ones with the tense, so I'm okay with those, but.
Mm-hmm.
You can certainly punt it to next week and we'll.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, we should probably punt it to our next meeting.
Yep.
Anybody disagree?
No, I like that idea too.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take no action then on those, which leaves us to agenda item seven, the budget discussion. So, um, you know, I did, I did a quick review, uh, in the, uh, budget hearing meeting, um. Obviously, uh, we've, we've gone over this significantly, uh, over the last couple of months. Um, do we want to go through it line by line? Does anybody have any, I know Eric shared the proposal, the budget as discussed out of last meeting. Uh, so we should all have it, but don't know if anybody wants to review this again, or should we, uh, put it to bed, or do you want to make changes to it?
Mark, I was just going to say, I mean, last week I did make several proposals to different items, you know, none of the, the only one that we made an adjustment or a change to um, was the salary to the, you know, to the director there. Um, you know, there will be some, depending on what happens there, I know the benefits could go down a little there as well. Again, we did, I did bring several motions for a few reductions here and there that I felt I wanted to make. Um, they weren't supported just to bring you up to speed. So that's where we stand with some of the things that I had. And then I wanted to ask Eric one question, just in case we end up moving this forward. Are we confident, Eric? And I, I understand Bill DeRosa's made a great point last week. And I, I hope it comes to this in the future and one of the things we want to talk to the treasurer about. It, it does seem unfortunate that Eric has to go through this and make the changes and we understand he's not a secretary and I forgive him for any kind of typos there. But, um, I just want to make sure, do we feel confident that the salaries that are in each of the lines for the town people are correct? Before we would, I just, you know, is that taken? Is this the spreadsheet that stayed from last year's and then whatever percentage raises in their contracts is what converted to the next line? Because it was hard for me. A few of them I had questions on and I didn't have a time. Spent a busy week. I didn't get to circle back to all spreadsheets and compare.
So you're referring to the salary on the employee costs tab?
Yeah, just, just their salary. And I, I know it's not going to make a big difference, you know, I'm not nickel and diming it. I'm just asking if he feels confident. And then you said Cheryl had looked at it. Are we confident that those figures are correct, the ones that rolled over based on the cells? I mean, I don't mind. I'm going to go through it myself, but, yeah.
As far as I know, I don't know of any errors in the calculations or what's in there for employee salaries.
Mm-hmm. And then I guess my other question too is, um, and I like that Kathy DeRosa's brought up the, the insurance, that hike of forty percent. It's pretty huge. I know we talked to it at the time. Uh, are we any closer to getting any final numbers on? Is that a, I, I know you sent an explanation saying that Cheryl felt confident with the figure we're putting in. Have we heard from the collaborative or what, or the consortium or whatever term they are with any kind of solid numbers of what the percentage increase will be?
Yeah, I thought that was confirmed, if I'm remembering that.
I'm just making sure. Those are my minor questions.
Yeah, Eric.
As far as I know, that information is correct. Um, Cheryl came out with a number that was slightly different than me. Um, they differed by about one percent, one and a half percent.
Okay.
So we went with her number since it was lower.
Mm-hmm. No, I appreciate that. I didn't know if we were going to hear like in a couple of months if they make a decision in June and they say, oh, we were wrong, you know, we figured this. Um, or that, okay. If that's the number, that's the number.
The only one I think in terms of that, that where I see some uncertainty still in the budget is, uh, in our insurance bill to Karma. Um, simply because they won't give us a final number on how much our, our insurance will increase because we're adding a town building, we're adding a community center and an additional person. So that will have some effect on it. Um, and they're not willing to, to calculate kind of what that is right now. Um, so that's one. And the other thing that there's, there's no full certainty on is MRF. Because the state has not set the final compensation rate for MRF as far as I know. Um, I've asked and they haven't made that decision yet because they apparently don't have their full actuarial data for the previous year, uh, yet.
And Eric, following up on that MRF question, because I think I remember we over the percentage was something like seventeen percent or something at one point. So were we a little over? Was it last year? And I, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
So we were over last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but remember last year was the year the, uh, the, uh, comptroller for the state and the unions partway through the budget year or after we adopted the budget, but before the year started, um, came up with a new contract related to MRF which dropped that rate significantly last year from what they initially said it would be. Um, so right now we're using for numbers the same rate that we had for last year.
And what was that? I don't have the spreadsheet up, sorry.
I think it's fifteen percent. Um, it's in the, it's in the ballpark of fifteen percent. Which it had gotten as high as, I think, around eighteen percent.
That's what I'm remembering, seventeen point nine or something.
And they had threatened to make it go quite a bit higher than that. Um, but then they didn't. Yeah, so, so last year they brought it down to fifteen point eight five percent, which is what we are, uh, estimating for this year. Now, it's possible that will be higher, but, you know, I have no basis for saying whether it's going to go up or down.
Thank you. Mark, I have no problem. Kath- Kathy DeRosa's has her hand up. Can we hear from her? Because I know she has experience in that.
I didn't see it, but yeah, um, yeah, I think, I guess so. It's not really public discussion time, but I don't see a problem as long as we don't get too bogged down into things. Kathleen, do you have, uh, something to add?
No. No, no, my hand is not up.
Oh, I see it on my screen. Sorry, Kathy.
Yeah, I didn't see it, but.
Never mind, never mind. I'm so sorry. I, at least I wanted to invite you to speak. My bad. It's on my screen. Moving.
Mark, could you bring the, uh, the spreadsheet up again and just the bottom where it shows over the past, you know, four or five years, what the budget has been each year?
Uh, yep.
Yeah.
You guys should be seeing this, right, so.
So I have more of a comment than I do a question. And I think, I actually was the, uh, the mill rate. I'm sorry, can you show the mill rate? So I guess my comment would be, in my opinion, this is a very good and responsible budget. Um, if you look at the mill rate, you know, just a few years ago, almost thirty-four percent, but you have to do almost thirty-six percent. And then the next year dropped to thirty-two percent respectively. And then it dropped to, you know, thirty-one and a quarter, and now we're going up less than a quarter. So I think when you look at inflation and everything, the way it's rising, uh, and the amount of things that we've added, like the new community center and, um, you know, s- uh, new positions and things of that nature, you, you're looking at such a tiny, in my opinion, uh, point five-five percent increase. Uh, from where we were just a few years ago, this is still a very, very good budget, well below what we were paying three years in a row. So, um, I just wanted to, you know, give my support for this budget. I think it's a very well-done, very responsible budget. And, um, I'm hopeful that it will pass.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I will just make the comment that the, that I, I generally would agree. Um, but the mill rate is tied to the property value. So the property value went up quite a bit. So the overall taxation, even though the mill rate has come down in some cases, the overall taxation is still up, you know, percent or so, so. Uh, but, you know, given inflation and things and given the additional things we're trying to get done with the community center and fund, uh, some of the, the funds that are, you know, problematic, I, I would agree with you. I think it's reasonable. Other questions or comments from the board?
Um, I just agree with what you guys are saying. I think it's a good budget overall. Um, that's, yeah, my two cents. Looks good.
Mark, and I'm just going to add mine. I know that when I look at a budget, I agree with everyone. I think we're moving the town forward. We're putting a lot of money in the funds. The funds are growing. Um, I think we've done a good job too, when you look at this on paper. The only reason that I bring things to the table or bring things up is I get a little afraid of, and I said it last week, I'm very transparent. You know, when we're, when we're raising the town's spending, which we'll probably agree to do, you know, by a, by six or seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a huge amount of money that in a few years, when the RAM budget goes back up, um, you know, it's going to be hard to pare that back down. But again, that's why we have the, the voting, the democratic society where I agree, a lot of people want to see us move things forward. So when suggestions are made by me, it was based on just the overall increase in spending and trying to kind of pare down a little where we can. And so coming up with maybe some suggestions because you know, it's, it's a lot to take for people on fixed incomes. But I agree, I mean, with the things that have been done, you know, the community center, adding new positions, hopefully streamlining how everybody, you know, the positions at the town hall and things like that. It's been a, a good thing, so it's positive. It's just, I'm more cautious when you add to something as just going in increments. But hopefully if the work keeps getting done and, and things are improving, then, then it's a good. And, and the good part is that the town gets to vote on it. But I, when I bring up things, it's only because of the six hundred or seven hundred thousand dollar increase in spending. And usually that's a lot in one year, but we're lucky because we're offsetting it by RAM. You know, and RAM also gave us back a hundred and twenty thousand, so that would be another add of spending on there if we didn't get the, whatever we got back from RAM, you know, that's already been deducted. But again, that's why we get to vote. You know, it was great that I got to bring my suggestions forward last week and. You know, it was great that I got to bring my suggestions forward last week and. You know, other people weren't in agreement, but I accept that, you know, I'm gonna still do my job the way I see fit, bring things to the table. Um for the people that voted me in, but I think overall we've done a good job, you know, we at least we voiced concerns where there were concerns and. Um you know, I just wanna see if we are gonna spend money, they go to the things we really need. If something could wait for another year, but we have like a catastrophe somewhere, then I'd like to see the money go to the catastrophe, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, you make a good point. I don't think anything on there was frivolous, but I think you do make a good point for sure.
Thank you.
Are you guys still seeing this? Are you seeing the?
Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet now, okay.
Mm hmm.
Yep.
Other comments? Would anybody like to make a motion that we adopt this as the proposed budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
I'll make the motion that we adopt the budget as uh submitted and shown here. As our twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
The second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Brian?
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, all the board members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Actually, Mark, I'm gonna change my vote. I'm gonna abstain from, I mean, I know when I've made my, I'm gonna abstain from. Uh, sorry, sorry. Actually, I'm gonna vote no. Not, it's gonna, it's gonna pass, but that's just my.
Okay. Now, I just want to make sure I got the votes right. So I've got Bill, I've got you as a yes, myself as a yes, Kimberly?
I'm opposed.
Okay, opposed. Louise?
I'm a yes.
Okay, and Brian? Did Brian drop out?
I thought I heard him say yes, but I don't wanna speak for him.
I think he did.
He should pop back up in the the waiting room. I'll just read. Uh let him back in again.
There he is, there he is.
There he is.
Yeah, okay. Brian, are you there?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm in, I'm in California, sorry.
Nice.
And so you're a little lighter there than out my window, so. Good, so we just wanted to make sure we got the vote correct. You're voting yes?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have four yes and two no's, okay? Motion passes. Thank you very much, guys. Okay. I think the screen sharing is done, correct? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I'm no longer sharing, okay. I can't if anybody has any further questions, but. Okay, well, does anybody have anything else to discuss on the budget? Okay, this is the budget then we will present at the meeting, which I believe is next Wednesday, May first. Okay. Very good. Uh agenda item eight is the administrator's report. Eric, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, the thing I wanted to go over with you, it's something we haven't done. In a while is just talk about all the grants. Uh that the town has that are active currently. Um and we can decide, you as a board can decide how much of this you wanna show as part of the budget discussion. Um but these are of the current grants that are active. There's one for senior transportation costs, the direct transportation costs. It's a little unclear how much we'll actually get from that. Um we know how much we're eligible for, but it depends on how much funding they have in the actual program. So we're we're ballparking, we're gonna get roughly that ten, eleven thousand dollars. Uh we did just get a new sixteen passenger bus. From a DOT grant. Um that was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars even. Um the bus is delivered and it's in service now. Uh we received the legislative direct grant for the connectivity study. That was a hundred thousand dollars. We've spent about a little more than half of it. Um I'm waiting on a proposal to spend the remaining half. Uh working on the design of that project. Um we did from that legislative grant in the study. We submitted a lots of grant. Uh to actually fund the construction of the project. That was a two-point, I think it's two point eight six million dollar grant. I just rounded it up. Um that did get final approval today by Capitol Regional Council of Governments. So uh that money um. It's still gonna be a while before we actually get the money, but we have that grant. So that was a a good success on the part of the town. We have a twenty twenty-two steep grant for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the senior transportation hub. Um again, we're we're slowly grinding through. The design and approvals for that, that has been approved at town meeting. And we have agreed to match that. Uh to get the grant. Um as we discussed last night. The steep grant for the rec field improvements. That was a five hundred thousand dollar grant with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar pound match. That was approved uh at the town meeting last night. That is in the design stage. We met with the uh our. Uh engineer from Nathan Jacobson today, myself and the field committee to continue pushing that. The state local bridge program, we did get basically a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar. Grant from the state. They will fund fifty percent of the cost of. The uh bridge slash culvert replacement on Lake Grove. Um that design is in progress. Estimated to begin basically uh a little over a year from now. So that the funding will cover, because we're adding money to the bridge and culvert fund this. Budget cycle and next budget cycle. And then that will be the town's total contribution towards that that particular culvert. And then we'll move on to the next one. Uh the next two were federal local bridge program grants. Um with what's called design managed by state. Which means we got the state to agree to fund the design portion. Um and then an additional appropriation through Investment Jobs Act funding. To bring both those bridges into a hundred percent funding. So combined, that's around eight point six million um in funding for those two projects. Um in terms of smaller grants. We have a grant in right now for the Department of Homeland Security. Because we just had to update our emergency operations plan for the town. And because we successfully filed it, uh they will give a us a reimbursement. Um for that, so we have that coming in. Um we're also just about ready to hit send. On a fairly small ARPA grant that's specifically for senior centers. Um that would be around nine thousand dollars. And again, that's money that's been allocated, so having written the grant, we will get that. Um I found out yesterday or the day before. We received a DOT micro grant. Uh to start an e-bike program uh. Um and. That's still somewhat dependent on final approval from the Board of Selectmen to allow me to accept that. Um but in addition to that, the Eastern Highlands Health District. Has some money from a Healthy Lifestyles grant that they will contribute to the project. And we're gonna put some additional money into that. From uh some unspent funds in another grant from a DOT connectivity project. Uh so right now, in the hopper, we have about thirteen point four million dollars. You know, in state and federal grant funding that we've received over the past few years. So we've had a really successful run at funding. Um we didn't get everything. Um we applied for a trip grant that was a low over a million dollar grant. Um that one didn't get funded. Um we currently have a rec trail study grant out there in the ether. Um that we should hear back from in the next three weeks to a month. That was for about eighty-three thousand dollars. Um my guess is we're not gonna get it. Um but it was worth applying for in case we did. Um and the last thing is I submitted. Uh to our legislative or, you know, the federal legislature. For congressional appropriation to fund a generator and also finish the community center uh fully. Um. Under the program we submitted, which was through the Department of Agricultural. Agricultural uh Rural Administration. That would fund seventy-five percent of the work. Uh we submitted a grant for about four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um we should know this fall whether we got that. And if we did that, what that would allow us to do is allow us to leverage the money that we had already set aside. To finish the community center and stretch that. Do a little bit better job finishing off the community center. And put in the generator backup for all three buildings um at the same time. So that's pretty much where we are. Um frankly, I'm done writing grants for a while. Um because it's a pretty big time suck. Um and I got other things I gotta do. Um but we've had a good run at it. Um I'm happy to answer any questions related to that.
Right, really, nice. Good summary. The board members have questions or comments?
I said, I said before, I told Eric earlier, this is amazing amount of money. Uh it's like one year's budget. Thirteen point four million dollars, so great work done by Eric and everybody that's been involved in writing these grants um. Amazing work. Thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing, Eric. It's highly commendable. Very good.
I appreciate the explanation, being a new Board of Finance member. This is wonderful. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, no, it it's, I'm actually. You know, I'm actually a decent grant writer. I don't claim to be awesome at it. Um the town planner, John Vuskowski. Has been editing the documents for me, um so it's been kind of a collaborative effort lately on grant submissions. Um but yeah, we we've been pretty successful with it, so. So I'm pretty happy, you know, and and a lot of these. Are kind of long-term projects. You know, for me. I mean, frankly, the work for the Route three sixteen multi-use pathway connection. Um I've been plugging away at that now for nine years. Um you know, and I was pretty completely unsuccessful for seven and a half of those nine years. Um and in the last, you know, year and a half. I've been able to fund the design and the construction for that. So um basically what I do is I sit on a list. In my head and on paper of all the projects that I think are worthwhile for the town to do. And then I just keep looking at all the grants that come up and whenever I see one that's applicable. Um you know, we go for it, so. So we have to, as a small town, take care, take advantage of any funding opportunity uh we can.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to the grants?
Yes, I had one. Eric, great job with all the money, all the projects. I know you devote a lot of time to it and effort, and I'm glad that you're the planner is involved too, because I knew. That was one of the things that was told to us. I only wanna ask one question that, the only one that bothers me a little because I worry about liability. And I didn't know it was this far along, but with the e-bikes. Are you concerned at all? You know, that I don't know how big of a project it would be, but if we're. Offering, maybe I know you talked about it through the community center or whatever. And I've been to cities where they have those bikes available and different things when you travel. Um. Are we worried at all about the financial impacts of liability with accidents or things of that nature? That's the only thing that worries me about that. The all the other ones are wonderful, but.
Am I worried about it personally? No. Is the Board of Selectmen worried about that?
For the town expenses, you know, I don't, we were, we saw. Yeah, that's all. I mean, I think we're a great town where we have the the walking. I love to walk the trails, the biking and everything like that. Personally, I wasn't sure. Again, I'm not raining on a parade, but we are a financial board. I just. You know, I just worry about that one a little bit, but I I don't, I I don't make the decisions for the town.
So Eric, Eric, you said you weren't concerned, but you were about to say something about the Board of Selectmen?
I said I'm personally not concerned, but. Um several members of the board are, so that will be a, I'm sure, a robust. Uh. Discussion before we proceed. The the problem is is that I had a very short window, like seven days. To work out a program and apply for the funding, which I did and I got it. Um so. Um now the question is, will they actually allow me to implement it? And and that's not a guarantee, and they may pull the plug on it. Which case, you know, we'll just reject the money. Um which I hate doing and would annoy me, but. Ultimately, that's their decision.
Yeah, other questions for Eric on these?
Oh, I have a question. All right.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, oh yeah, I'll make it quick. Sorry, Louise, um.
No, that's okay.
Um so that would be on town insurance, right? If somebody was injured on the bikes, I'm assuming.
Why?
Town insurance, would that go on town insurance? Like if somebody got injured on the bike?
They'll come after the town if they get injured on an e-bike that the town rented to them.
Like a law, a lawsuit?
I would think so. Anytime you have an event in a school building or a town building or something like that. Someone slips on a banana peel, someone slips in water in the cafeteria when they're going back to their.
Yeah.
We face it up, I'm not trying to, that's the only thing that worries me with the big expenses, that's all.
How much the increase in insurance is, I guess, to go for, make a better decision, I guess.
Right, I mean, it's down the line.
I think the first thing is let's, let's wait and see if the Board of Selectmen approve it, and then we can certainly talk about it.
Oh, yeah.
Why? Because it it may stop there and not really something we even need to discuss then, so.
Right, and and look, certainly I've referred this to Karma. Um in their risk management. You know, division, it made them fully aware that we were considering this as a program. Um the problem with Karma is their turnaround to get anything back from their risk management. You know, is long outside. The grant application timeframe, so it's not like you can. Get an idea, run it by them, get a response, submit a grant. So. You know, I submitted the grant and found out about it long before I ever got a response from Karma. But sure. There is potential liability concern with that. Same thing with allowance, you know, building new pickleball courts. There's an enormous amount of liability now that we've agreed to build a playground for children. Um you know, so all of these things incur some liability. But they're also community assets, so the question really is, is it worth the potential liability? Um or not, and that that'll be for the board to decide.
Eric, can that e-bike one be redirected to a a non-e? And make it bike-related, or does it have to strictly be e-bike?
Um. Could I reject that grant and write a different grant for something else? I mean, the the whole goal of that grant, so we're clear. Is to give people a chance. To try out commuter-style e-bikes to see whether they will work out for transportation. This is a DOT grant. It's not about recreation. It's not about going out and having fun riding your bike on the rail trail. It's, does this work as a mode of transportation? So in this case, given how hilly uh Andover is. And how out of shape the average person is. Um doing it with a regular bike probably is not practical. Um anybody that's capable of riding a regular bike is probably already riding a regular bike and owns owns one. So the utility probably isn't there. Um could we run a successful program? By putting the bikes down at, say, the library? And have a bike loaner program for people who wanted to ride recreationally on the rail trail? Yeah, I think that could be a great program. But that's not something I could have funded with this grant.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, you know. Can that be used kind of around the lake area?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The goal is to get people to try them. The goal is to get people to try them.
Hmm.
Okay, Eric, you got anything else to add for your administrator's portion?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, which is liaison reports. I know Rob is usually our liaison for CIP and also working with the. Board of Ed on the policy there, um, does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to Board, Agenda Item Ten, which is the Board Open Discussion, does anybody have anything they want to bring before the board?
Mark, were we gonna touch on the, uh, successful joint meeting that we had, I mean?
Uh, yeah, if you could go ahead and bring that up, it's probably not a bad idea, if you want to give a recap, it'd be good.
Sure, we ended up meeting, um, with the auditor, um, the vice chair and chair of each of the Board of Finance, Board of Ed. And Board of Selectmen on Monday, April fifteenth, and Eric was there as well, the town manager. Um, kind of just to uh, go over the corrective action plan that had been submitted, talk about the audit a little. Talk about financial reporting back and forth, um. And just, you know, I know that it was important to me to have everyone in the room and to kind of, and Cheryl Miller wasn't invited as well. She wasn't able to attend, she was out of town. Um, but, um, just to hear the primary people that deal with the reports that are needed. Um, give us feedback, you know, so we could hear it firsthand. Um, so as you can imagine, I won't go into everything that was said. Um, everyone was allowed to talk about their side of the story, I thought that was important. Um, Eric voiced what the treasurer needs. In order to maintain the books and do everything that she needs to do, checking off and. I think, you know, trying to come up with a good timeline of receiving some reports from the Board of Ed. Again, I'm not the expert of all of this, um, but it had to do with some of the things we were cited for on the audit. So we're trying to get a better system in play. Um, I think both sides, which I think was, it was really good that some people were there, so we were able to say. That it was good that we were able to air why maybe people had been reluctant to do that in the past. Um, and just kind of talk about it, I think we came to a good overall understanding at the end of it. It was a two-hour meeting because everyone got to speak their piece and talk about it. Um, you never think these meetings are gonna go two hours, but they did. The auditor was able to pipe in there and explain different things that he needed. He voiced his opinion that he was getting great cooperation from the town, getting everything he needed from the Board of Ed. But it was more trying to get just some timely reports so that Cheryl could. Put her stamp on whatever needs to be done for the town from the Board of Ed. So an agreement was reached, right, Mark? If you want to take it from here, I think.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good summary, I mean, basically, we, we got agreement on, you know, what. You know, made sense for the, uh, uh, for the treasurer to have on a monthly basis and, and. There was some angst over kind of the timeline and, you know, if it was a needed monthly or not, but, you know. Everything we do is just gonna be better than what we have now, and I think there was good agreement, everyone was, was, uh.
Positive.
I think, yeah, I think that it was a positive outcome, uh, for sure, for that, from that meeting, and, uh. I think it's absolutely a basis on which we'll move forward, you know, if this is, you know, if we follow the, you know, this. Regime, I think it's going to, uh, a regiment, it's going to, uh, do what we need to do, and I think we'll be in good shape.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments or questions beyond that?
So I just wanted to add one thing that I did correct, uh, and just so Eric hears that too, I put it in an email, but, um. They had, uh, the Board of Ed was sending, I don't know if it went to the full Board of Finance or just Mark and myself. A report, uh, you know, financial reporting. Here and there through the year, they had started putting their packets together, which they've also said that they include on their Board of Ed agendas. So if anyone needed more in-depth reporting, they can find it on their Board of Ed re-agendas. I looked back, Mark, we hadn't been getting those reports every month. Uh, it doesn't matter, it's neither here, we're, we're all about moving forward, um, they, you know. But I just want it clear that we didn't know what exactly Cheryl was looking for. Us as the Board of Ed, sure, we're, we're in taking a packet, but we're assuming they're getting it as well, but it was just nice for us all to be in one room, um. Clear it out.
Good, you know, Celeste made a good, made good notes about the exact deliverables. On everyone's behalf, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a good basis on which to move forward.
So everyone can feel good about that, we think we resolved, or at least we're able to come together on an agreement for moving forward, what's to be expected.
Yep.
And the fact that no one, I think there was concern, this is important to say to everyone here. Like you said, with the timeline, a little bit of angst, I think the Board of Ed was afraid if, you know, we said we have to have it every thirty days, and if. If it was a short month or a vacation, school vacation month, or maybe they didn't get the check register back on time to reconcile. No one was going to be at their doorstep on the thirty-first day being upset that it wasn't in. We're all gonna understand that we get it in a fair amount of time and just, yeah, have a system in place, that's it.
Okay, are there comments or questions? Any other agenda topics for, uh, for general discussion?
I think just, sorry, very quick. So obviously, we moved the budget forward, the town budget meeting would be May first, right, which is next Wednesday? So we'll still have another, um. And all of us go, correct? I don't know if we need to talk about procedure.
Right, yeah, it's a good point, you know, since we've got new member.
Whoever can make it, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, assuming you can, uh, so the town budget meeting is next week. Um, you know, we generally attend in person, as was mentioned, um, earlier, um. Somebody suggested maybe have the Board of Ed out there, it's something that we'd normally done, because they have their own workshops and stuff. Uh, and the superintendent usually talks on behalf of the Board of Ed. But generally, Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, uh, manage the meeting on behalf of the town. Uh, we make a presentation on the budget, I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have already seen this in the past. Um, we highlight the main key points of the budget, explain, you know, why, uh, why, where it is, where it is, and. Try to explain any big differentials that are occurring. Uh, break out kind of, uh, between the different budgets, AES RAM and, and, uh, the town's expenditures. Um, and then basically, it's an open forum and people can make, uh, motions, they can ask questions. And they can make a motion to change the, uh, budget line items. Um, so that's basically how it's done here, um, in, in most of England, I think. You know, the people can make a motion to, to decrease or change, uh, certain. Uh, line items, and the town then votes, or the committee or the people in the meeting will then vote. Uh, up or down on those agenda items, and eventually, hopefully, we have a budget that we can pass. Um, and then if the budget is approved at town meeting, then it goes to referendum. It's not done yet, goes to referendum and two weeks later or so. I think it's the second Tuesday following the meeting is the, the, uh, exact timing. Uh, the town's budget referendum takes place, and people will go to the town and vote, town hall. And then if it passes, we're good, we are done for the year, we will, uh, move on. And if it doesn't, then we, uh, go through the process again of having another recommended budget, so. Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll work, Eric, I'll take the presentation from last year. Um, I'll review it, I'll update the numbers, I'll send it to. You and Joanne and like really the whole board, anybody has any comments, suggestions or input, you know, we can, we can try to modify that. I should have time to do that and get it to you, you know, hopefully by. Hopefully by the end of the day Saturday, I'd say, and then, uh, hopefully get some time to provide some input.
Okay, thank you. Eric, do we know the referendum for RAM yet? It's all, are they still back-to-back days? Do we know that?
Uh. Give me one second, I'll look on the town clerk's office and tell you what days.
Sorry, I could have looked it up, I didn't know, you know, there always seems to be.
Yeah, I didn't put that in my calendar.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the town's website.
May seventh is the RAM budget referendum.
May seventh, okay.
May seventh.
Thank you.
We may want to put that in the town calendar, I don't see it on there, just a thought.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other, uh, board discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven, which is correspondence. I didn't have any until we were in the middle of the meeting, and I don't know if any of you saw it, but Celeste, Celeste Willard did send something from the Board of Ed. Um, which we can consider, I think, at our next meeting, it's not a topic for this, for this meeting, it's not on the agenda. Uh, but it is a request to. Move, uh, one hundred and three thousand dollars, I believe it is. Uh, of the AES surplus from the twenty twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget year. Into the AES capital funds, uh, did a quick calculation, um, and that's about two point. Six-five percent of their, of their, uh, of their budget for that fiscal year. Um, so that would be an item that we take up at the, uh. Next meeting, this is something that's allowed by the state statutes, so. Any other correspondence or anything we should discuss? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to Agenda Item Twelve, which is public speak. I have a few members of the public, Eric, do you want to just go around? So conduct.
Uh, sure, first one on my screen is Linda Fix.
All set.
Okay, next one up is Kathleen.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, Shannon Love.
All set, thank you, good night.
And Leanne Hutchinson.
Yes, um, I assume you can see that I posted the salary range for the East Hampton Senior Coordinator position that was advertised. About a month ago in the chat room, that's all.
It's in the chat, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Leanne.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, I guess if we have nothing else, then we will move on to Agenda Item Thirteen, which is adjournment, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Louise, I heard you. Second, you have seconds, Joanne, I see you got your hand up, you're muted, but it's.
I muted myself, I'll second the motion to adjourn, thank you.
All right, um, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everybody, I think we've done a. Good amount of work here, I think we have a good budget presented to the town, and we'll, um, we'll see how the, uh. How the, uh, town feels about it at the meeting, and we'll move on from there, thanks for all the hard work. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.